All right, why don't we go ahead and open up the public hearing? We would typically do the minutes first, but since Maria to be here to vote on last week's or our last month's minutes. And then I think she was here for the prior month as well. So that would be, we should get her on board to probably approve those as well. That being said, we've got a couple of continuations. Just pulling up our package here.
So the first gentleman, I have not heard anything from. And I did call Jose.
340 Bain Street, Kathy?
Yes, and Jose for the second one. He is feeling under the weather and he asked if we could continue with another time.
Of course, that is fine with me. So let's continue that to next month. While we're at it, we should look, find a date for next month. What's that second Thursday look like? I want to, that would be the 14th.
So as of the 15th of July, I think after that in-person meeting, whether they're going to allow us to do a hybrid, I'm not sure.
So if we did.
The 14th works for us to do virtual.
Perfect. Let's, let's do that. If there's not a conflict with any of the board members. Bob and Vincent, does that work for you?
Just a moment.
Of course.
What's the date again?
The 14th of July, it's that second Thursday.
No, that's fine.
Yep.
And Kathy, with regard to the going from virtual to live, which is understandable, I'd like to recommend commencing that after Labor Day. Only because it's, I don't know how busy the agenda will be in August, but I think everybody given possibility of either something presenting that you could still join remotely, you know, even if you're on vacation and you just wanted that kind of thing. I think that flexibility would serve us well for August and just request that we go live after everybody quote unquote is resettled into their routine after the after the holiday, Labor Day holiday. So for the September meeting or even October going forward, that would just be my suggestion.
I like it. Sounds brilliant to me.
I will pass that along to the powers that be.
And you know, in the meantime, we can just double check if they what the allowance is from the state in terms of still doing remote, just to make sure that we can do that for.
Sure, certainly.
I know, I know we can. I think we as a board need to vote.
I'd be happy to make a motion that we continue to have a remote hearing for this July and August.
Second.
All in favor?
Barbara and I.
Vin Raguchi, I.
Jennifer, I, all right. Remote for July and August and would be very, potentially very exciting to see people live. We can back in September. Haven't done, haven't been in town hall for a meeting in a long time. I will say a number of the towns that I'm in front of, they have returned to in-person meetings. And it's what? We have to drive to find you now and commute? It's there is a certain definitely advantages of being able to do this remote. You lose some of the collegiality of which is the downside, but it is more efficient. All right. So I'm like to make a motion to continue the public hearing for 340 Main Street till July 14th. And there's two of those virtual public hearings for 340. So let's continue both of those. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Barbara and I.
Vin Raguchi, I.
I, all right, we'll bump those to next month.
I would suggest that Kathy, if you're going to reach out to Mr. Say in particular, because his request was we'll call it medical for whatever, he might know what the, the status of Mr. Laws is.
As far as I know, from the last meeting, Mr. Laws has not been in contact with him either. There have been a lot of possible tenants that have come in to talk with Jerry as to whether they could go in there, but I don't know the status of that.
Well, that being the case, I'd just like to point out and maybe have an understanding that if Mr. Laws, for that purpose, the special use permit for detail and auto repair wasn't to appear without explanation otherwise from party or otherwise, that that the application should be formally, I don't know, would it be dismissed or denied? Without hearing, I don't think you can deny it, but it should be. This is the second time over for him and it doesn't seem as if he's making any effort to maintain outreach to the board.
I agree, Bob. And I think once we have, when we have the owner in front of us next month, hopefully we can get an update across the board on this and then we can take this resolve it one way or the other, just so it's not continuing on the agenda. I agree that we've been. There's no need to continue to kick it down the road forever, but so we can close that one out next month. The next thing we have is for 172 Park Street, which is the Bank of America building. So we have a continued virtual public hearing will be held on Thursday, June 9th, 2022. Petition of Gensler representative for Fleet Boston, the number 88322, 172 Park Street, North Reading, MA, map 54 parcel 136, there are variants from article 200-87C subsection 11A, environmental performance regulations of the North Reading zoning bylaws for upgrade lighting to meet ALMGL chapter 167B, section 3. And we received from the applicant, a letter from Bowler Engineering, which is in the, in the file. Do we have someone from the applicant or Bowler here today who can give us a?
Yes. Hi, this is Amanda Johnson. I am representing the bank. I'm here with Gensler.
And good evening. This is Austin Turner from Bowler. We're the civil engineering consultant working with the applicant.
Perfect. Thank you. We do have your report in hand, but if you could just give us a quick summary of your findings, that would be very helpful to.
Yeah, absolutely. So I know we were in front of the board last month and presenting kind of an updated and frankly, modernized lighting plan. And at the board's request, we had put together a letter which provided some context and an additional summary of our review of the applicant's updated lighting plan and providing some additional detail with respect to our thoughts on the appropriateness of that lighting plan, how it relates to what we're accustomed to seeing for industry standards and guidelines related to these specific kinds of lighting. And as by way of background or quick background, Bowler, we're a civil engineering and land development consultants. We're accustomed to doing and frequently design lighting plans for land development projects, very similar to this. So we have a lot of experience. We work with lighting consultants, we do it ourselves on, on exterior lighting. So we're very familiar. And we did look at the, the lighting plan the applicant had prepared, which is labeled as, you know, version three, which is reflective of the feedback the board had provided at last month's discussion. What we found as kind of an over generalization was the lighting levels from the previous version were reduced by approximately 50%. And frankly, it's probably a bit more appropriate for, for this kind of situation in this particular location. With respect to the variance request, the, the ordinance requires that a variance be sought or variant or release be granted if the lighting levels are calculated to exceed one foot candle over the property boundary into a public right of way. In this instance, and I can bring up the plan if it's helpful, the, the lighting levels are calculated. It's not show you right here rather than you speculate what I'm talking about. I'll bring the screen up real quick here.
I will say the, the diagrams that came through to us in our package, I could read your letter, but the specifics of the plan with the, just the.
Did that come up? Okay.
Clear enough to read.
Yes.
Okay. So you're looking at the lighting plan now?
Yes.
Okay. So this, this plan here, this is the updated version, just by way of a kind of a quick refresher. This was the prior version and really the area we're focusing on is at the top of the screen. That's the public right of way. And you can see the lighting levels on last month's version were calculated to be above two and in some cases above three, where the ordinance requires being one or lower. All right. So this is the updated version and the changes is really some of these light poles removed a bit further interior to the property. The fixture heads were changed. They're going to be LED lighting, which affords them to be far more directional. They're dark sky compliant. And you're not going to get the upglow and, and the lighting is far more concentrated and focused on the immediate point at the fixture. So you can see right here, we do have some cases where the lighting levels are just above one. And you can see at this driveway that it come down significantly, but still 1.2, 1.3 at those locations. Now, when you're looking for some context in terms of what I'm accustomed to doing with industry standard expectations are, we like to have lighting levels and the industry frankly suggests that you have lighting levels at these ranges at driveway intersections to provide adequate in what is believed to be appropriate illumination for these locations. What that requires is when you have this, you know, this hard interface, if you will, with a right of way boundary, there is expected to be just some limited bleed, if you will, over that boundary. You can see it rapidly diminishes into that right of way boundary, but you are going to get just this little brief bubble of lighting, which may extend just beyond the right of way boundary, which is just associated with some of the, the fading, if you will, of these lights at those locations. So that's a very brief overview. And what we're asking of the board is for relief from that specific requirement specifically for these, these locations here. And then you can kind of see along these property boundaries where there are two commercial uses, I mean, or the post office and another banking institution immediately to our left or right. We do also have a little bit of, you know, spread beyond that boundary, but it does also rapidly diminish there. And we've reduced the lighting levels significantly interior to the property to what's more appropriate and expected in the industry. That, that's a lot. I threw a lot out there, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
We have anything remind me, Austin, that shows? Or can you describe what the, the current lighting levels?
Certainly could have. Yeah. And I can do probably pictures probably better, right? So I'm going to drop the magic Google man on the screen here. But what, what's out there right now is kind of by today's standards, a bit archaic and perhaps kind of caveman style lighting, which is really pole mounted floodlights and they're not directional. They're just this big blast of sunburst lighting. They're very high up on the pole and it really just just kind of illuminates the entire property. And frankly, you're going to get a lot more spread from that fixture than you would with these kind of focalized focused LED lighting fixtures. But this site is illuminated by, illuminated by a handful of these floodlights and then some kind of garish under lighting on the canopy. And that's all proposed to be removed with some kind of modernized lighting. So.
So the floodlights are going away and then from my look at the plan, it looks like four new pole lights are going in, but closer to the building.
Correct. Yes. If you go back to the plan, what you can see here is we've got a light pole kind of tucked into this corner with a couple of LED heads that are focused and kind of very directional. Another one that's very much interior to the property. And then one pole with two fixtures on each located into the rear to just give some appropriate light, light levels to the rear of the property. And then under the canopy, they're replacing kind of the old lighting with some one wall pack and a couple of kind of under canopy lights that are very focused. You can see the lighting levels underneath them. You get this, you know, immediate lighting level, but then the diminishing of that light is very rapid because they create this circle immediately underneath them. This is the area of focus predominantly because this is where the ATM is going to be. So there's a security level lighting that wants to be achieved underneath there.
Are those on 20, it's actually 24/7 when it's dark? Is it?
Yeah, they'll drop the, the ATM in the drive up will be on, correct. And then the lighting in the, in the parking lot usually drops to what we're accustomed for, for security level lighting, just to maintain some level of illumination in the property. Usually after closed, but the under the canopy lights will remain on. So if people were there after hours or for some reason needed to access the ATM later.
Bob and Vin, questions, thoughts?
So in the, in the past conversations we had, there was, I raised the concern that while it isn't residential, I was just concerned about I think you described it almost as the bubble, the glare, the that would, might occur in the evening, particularly if you were across the street during an evening sporting event and have to wonder if there was going to be some overflow glare as you were, because the stands in the high school field face the street as opposed to being the back and interesting, you know, it's a nice effect, but sometimes I wonder, but admittedly, I was in the stands watching something a week ago and
Have a meeting.
Bank of America isn't exactly on direct, you know, it's off to the left, but notwithstanding, you know, that was, that was one of the concerns I raised. And I know you're going to, you'll probably address that in a moment. My only other question was, is there any possibility of putting the, the lighting on sensor? And I was curious if there was some, if there was a reason because oh, maybe if you might have, maybe we should do these in, in sequence. What, do you have any opinion to offer with regard to you have halo effect or the bubble effect that you noted with regard to late night, if they're going to be pretty much continuous in their illumination?
Sure. And so what I, what I meant by bubble was more of the, the expected level of, of spread, so to speak. The, the glare that you're referring to is more, you know, as, as we look at it from when we're designing lighting is more, you know, the appearance of that light, like so that, that giant floodlight, that thing's going to be obnoxious. So you're going to look at it and you're going to get sunspots in your eyes because it's so bright, right? So the, the pole mounted fixtures that, that we're proposing here look similar to these. And to give you some effect, those are very, very directional. And if you were sitting in the stands across the street, for example, you're not going to be looking directly at the fixture. It's very much downward. And there's a strong, sharp cutoff angle for, for that lighting. So you'll see illumination on the ground. But you're not going to be looking directly at the fixture or the, the actual light itself. So you'll see illumination on the ground, but you're not going to get that big glare factor when you're looking at kind of that.
What do you want?
That big, sorry.
So, so combination of the, the fixture design and the fact that it's going to LED will make it a more directed and focused light and not have that that halo glow, glare, whatever that seems to exist with existing lights.
Yes, sir. That's correct. And these, you know, when they're called dark skies, because they have sharp cutoff. So you don't get the upglow. It's very directional and concentrated and focused. With respect to your second question, you were asking if they could be put on some kind of sensor. I'm assuming like a motion sensor or something.
With, and I, please correct me if my memory isn't serving, but you know, there was this, there was a thought that was put forward by the bank that you know, this is going to increase lighting, that it's going to create a greater sense of, of security interest for the for the property and in quote unquote, the surrounding area. And while that has merit inherently, the thought that, you know, the only people that are going to be accessing the, the bank by and large in the evening are either going to be in a car. And I'm not to say that a car couldn't be, you know, fall prey to a, you know, theft. Or people walking up to use the ATM. And even that, I mean, no offense, but the, the district isn't, there isn't a lot of business that's open. So anybody, quite frankly, that's going to Bank of America at, in the late evening, let's say even after nine, chances are they're not walking up, they're driving up. So I, while I appreciate the thought that there was merit to increasing the lighting because it'll just be safer for everybody. That was counter, I, I, I wasn't swayed as much by the thought that it was going to create this different lighting effect that would just brighten the property and create an over, just an imbalance along the street. Now, without getting any more tangential than I may have already, you know, you're going to be putting an LED. The bank to the left of the post office probably won't. So there's just, you're going to be different inherently. Regardless of the directional of the fixture. So that, you know, we're not trying to stop progress. I mean, hey, you know, an LED is a better bulb, right? But at the same time, to me, the, the question of customer safety as opposed to creating a brighter identity for Bank of America, for lack of a better idea of it just being a more outstandingly lit area from dusk until dawn. And it just stands out because it's just so brightly lit. Seems to suggest to me more of an effort to no, maybe the wrong word, advertise Bank of America as opposed to what it, you know, when, if you put sensor lights in, then they would just get brighter when somebody walks up. But maybe that can't be achieved with it. I'm not an alumina, I don't have any background in lighting.
But I, I, I can appreciate where you're coming from. And I, I understand, I understand that concern to to that end, if, if the sole purpose of this, and it's not the purpose of this, but if, let's assume for a second that it was, was to simply just rebrand the property and have it be some kind of glowing orb amongst the others. I wouldn't be putting any lights behind it because nobody's going to see it anyway. Right? I'd want to, I'd want this thing to be super bright. And frankly, if I wanted this to be kind of standing out, I'd have lighting levels that were far higher than this. And really the intent, I'm not dismissing what you're saying, but it's, it's kind of like a counterpoint. Really what we're trying to achieve is appropriate security level lighting under the ATM. That's a big focus, obviously, right? Where right now you get big floodlight, hot spots and then immediate dark spots. You get deep shadows and you get this surface of the sun bright spot in the front of the property. That floodlight is probably going to do a far better job of branding this property where the LED lights are much more uniform and far more even. And it's not going to seem nearly as bright because of how those things are structured and, and put together. Really what we want to do is get an appropriate level of lighting under the canopy where it doesn't exist today. Frankly, improve the lighting at the intersections because they're in deep shadows with some of those spotlights that just create this sharp, sharp distinct cutoff in lighting levels. And we're, we're just nudging above one barely as you get to those driveway intersections. So we're not creating a Las Vegas style look here. It's, it's going to be a much more softer and even distribution of light and more appropriate at the intersections, frankly.
What's interesting about this proposal and I'm, I'm quite frankly, I mean, I'm heartened by the, by the additional information being put forward tonight, that being a more focused fixture as well as the effect of the LED and the placement. So I'm just trying to be as comprehensive in the review. What's interesting about a proposal like this is, is that it's one of those things where you may not know until it's completed. And let's just, just for my, and I don't think anybody wants to keep chasing any interest down and telling them, well, can you make it just a little bit brighter or just a little bit darker? I don't think that's practical. And I don't think that's, that's the point of this. But in the event that it just is imbalanced to, for whatever reason, may it be aesthetic or practical for the community at large. You know, do you have the ability with these fixtures to diminish the lighting, whether it's, you know, a slight percentage to even it out? Or is this just, if you put this fixture in with this illumination level, that's it. And if you wanted to change it, you have to take and replace the entire fixture. Is it much like a lamp where you can just change the level of the bulb?
No, that's a great question. So the old lighting was simply bulb in, bulb out. You get what you get, right? With, with the new lighting, particularly the LED fixtures, there is some level of customization that you can do. You, you have, you have the ability to a certain extent to change the angle of the lighting. You have the ability to a certain extent to perhaps throttle up or down the intensity. It's not infinitely customizable, but there is some level of customization that can be achieved with the fixtures is how I understand it. And in particular, speaking with this lighting designer. So to your point, if, if somebody were out here one night, a month, two months, three months later, after they were complete and something didn't feel right or look right, there is an opportunity, I believe, to refine that, so to speak.
That's, that is helpful to know. Do you have, do you also have to take this in front of the CPC, remind me for?
That's not my understanding. They asked us to appear with you, obviously, because the way the lighting was currently calculated, we were expecting that slight increase above one at the right of way boundary.
And I very much appreciate you both coming back with a revised plan that is more appropriate for the location and also with some, you know, additional information. So we can actually understand a little bit better, given none of us are lighting experts. Then maybe how this would work. I, I share Bob's concern that we didn't want this to be a floodlights on the building and have it be shining out there particularly later at night. Cause it's kind of, we're just kind of a sleepy little town still. And do you recognize that you have made substantial efforts to bring down the lighting levels right at the street boundary, which is very helpful. Take a peek back at the bylaws. I know we have the limitation on the street side. And I need to peek at it to see if it has the same limitations on the sidelines or if it's just up that right of way.
I think it was, I think it was section 200.8711. And there's, I'm just kind of reading here. It says, no lighting shall be permitted that is not installed in a manner that will prevent direct light from shining on any street or adjacent property. And then the second part of that is that direct or indirect lighting shall not cause a total illumination excess of one foot candle when measured at any point vertically above the boundary of a residence district or any residential property or right of way line of any public way.
Okay. So it's both the right of way and the, and the boundaries with the, the two butters, the post office and the other bank. And so we are along the right of way. As you said, it's just looking at.
Yeah, you can see it's right up here. Your 1.6, 1.7 minute drops, then you're hearing 1.2, 1.3.
And what's our high points on the boundaries?
Boundaries, let's see, we're with the bank immediately adjacent to us. Looks, there's our highest measure of that was three. And then with the post office, just right here, looks to be 1.3 and another one that's kind of common driveway link between the two properties. There's another 1.3 that's immediately next to that driveway.
So I would say on the, on the one hand, and I'm I think it totally makes sense to be swapping to LED. It's more efficient, more, more focused. I will say I did drive through the drive-through number of. drive through the drive-through number of nights ago at 10 o'clock at night to see how it felt. And it didn't feel dark, particularly to me. I mean, it's coming up in a car. And I have used that ATM at both the, where you park and go into the booth, as well as the drive-through at late hours. So existing lighting levels did, were not uncomfortable for me personally. Something to, to add to the mix there. Ben, do you have some thoughts on this?
Just a question on the lighting. Is, is it the three, the four, or the 5,000K?
Good question.
Because I'm wondering how it matches with the RMLD streetlights for the area.
I have, I'm rotated.
So Ben, is your concern that it's going to just differentiate the lot?
Well, I just don't know. I mean, you know, there's, there's one version of the light that, that tends toward the yellow scale. There's the deep end of the light that heads towards the blue scale. And, you know, ju- just, it, it would be different if it were different than the RMLD street shade.
Yeah, well, that, that inherently, that's, that's an excellent question. You know, the coloration, but even if it goes to white, you know, the, you know, an LED white is, or clear, or they're, they're just, it's, it's different. You know, they, they, they just create a different look. You could take an LED at a 60 loom, and you could take, you know, Albert Edison, you know, classic old gangster styled bulb at 60, and you put them in the same lamp, and you put them side by side, and it's just going to look different. It's just as, I think as Ben is pointing out, it, it sways towards more crisp white, which is quite frankly, you know, probably the better. But you've got a, a post office that, you know, they're not going to, they're not going to invest any money in terms of changing their lighting. The bank, to the, on the other side, they might, but possibly not. And then the next property is Ryers, which is on the intersection. And, you know, they're more likely to keep what they have now, which is just that classic soft look. So I think that inherently, this property, no matter what the level of lighting is, I think that just by changing over to these new fixtures with, with a greater spread, focus as it might be, and an LED bulb, it's, it's just going to look different. That may not be a bad thing. It may ultimately mean, quite frankly, nothing, because it is still a very, it's a commercial area. And after 10 PM, there's nobody other than the people accessing Bank of America, or is it Reading Cooperative, using those properties. It's just people driving by. So, you know, it doesn't wash out, no pun intended. But at the same time, it's, I just, it is just going to look different. It's only going to, even if, because it's always looked this way, right? I mean, that's part of the problem. That's one of the concerns of zoning. Our, our board always has to deal with. With advancements in tech, changes, everything is just going to look different. And ultimately, things are going to catch up and start to look the same. But I can tell you right now, I don't see the post office updating their lighting in any way, just because there's no reason for them and they probably don't have the budget anyway. And secondarily, I don't know what the other banks' interest really would be. So I think the, the question that the board has to just keep in mind is, you know, do we really, notwithstanding the interest to increase security and safety and eliminate these, these, these black lines? I, I understand that for driving purposes. You, I, quite frankly, I, I've seen it and I've experienced it. You just suddenly go from a floodlight area, and then it's suddenly just black. It's almost like a, a classic spot in a rearview mirror. We just can't see anything. And then you do, as you move into the next light area. But it's just going to look different. And I don't know if that's a bad thing or a good thing. I'd, I'd welcome anybody's comment, Jerry as well, especially. Because he might be able to speak to another area of town where he's seen this. I know they, you know, especially up on 28, where they've constructed new storage facilities that are accessible. I don't know. They have just a different light look. And you just don't think of it because it's all commercial up in that area anyway.
Yeah. And I would say, you know, I'm, I'm all for changing these to LED and upgrading your lights, but they're very probably do that with not needing a variance. And probably if you were to dial these down a notch, because you are very close, particularly on the, on the right of way, but it's higher on the, you've got more bleed going on the abutting property lines. Yeah, I would be interested to know if you could implement some of your upgrades that you're interested in. And then still keep it below the threshold that the town is seeking for illumination on the sidelines.
Which is an excellent point. If the idea that the new fixtures and the lighting is just going to create a more consistent lighting from fixture to fixture, because I, I know earlier in the presentation, you mentioned that it seems that you almost go from one illuminated fixture, and then it's just like a dead black spot because of the old floodlight, quote unquote. And then to you, and you're in your next fixture, which lights up again. To chairman's point, chairperson's point, the idea here is that if you're using better fixtures and the lighting is more advanced, then you don't, that'll eliminate those black, those dead, dead spots, black spots or shading. And if the idea is, is that if that creates a more consistent lighting around these areas, maybe the only place where the lighting really truly needs to be increased, if at all, would be at the ATM. And that might be a very focused variance with regard to, and just as long as you can stay within the existing levels for the butter illumination, existing illumination. Is that, am I following what you suggested, Madam Chairperson?
Yeah, what it was looking for is, and I, I think I appreciate this proposal. And I think it makes sense for the bank to be upgrading and revising its lighting. What I'm not clear is that, you know, you've posed a, a list of fixtures which would have certain level of illumination and at the property lines. Would think that there's probably variations that you can do. So you have something very similar, but it just brings down the lighting slightly. So you're not at a, a position of needing a variance from this board.
Okay, so what's the pleasure of the board? Is it go back to the drawing board? Is it? How, I, I'm happy to proceed however you feel appropriate. I'm, I'm just feel like I'm in a little bit of a purgatory state right now with the request, knowing I make sure I'm proceeding appropriately.
Fair enough.
Purgatory leads us in one direction, either heaven or hell. So let's just.
That's, well, yeah, and I feel like I'm trending towards the wrong one right now.
Well, the lighting will be, might be better in there.
Yeah, it might be a little hot.
Before we close out the, the hearing and, and move to take this one way or the other, did we have any other, anyone in the audience who wanted to comment? Or Jerry, did you have any additional comments on this?
No, I do not. I think, I think your comments are, are accurate, are real.
Thank you, Jerry. Kathy, was there anyone else attending for this hearing?
I don't know that there are any abutters present. I didn't receive anything from any departments, boards, or abutters.
Did we get, did we get anything from CPC on this?
They're not meeting until later this month, so they didn't have a chance to bring it before their members.
Did they, did they, remind me, did they have something in the file from one of the prior meetings? I can't recall.
I think all we received was a memo from Jerry.
That being said, I would suggest that we
Jerry said, he's speaking with the police chief and the town planner about this proposal. They did not have any issues as well.
Thank you, Kathy. Though I would make a motion to close the and then we can move towards our deliberation.
Second.
Do you all favor?
I.
Barbara and I.
Hey, all right. So I would, just to summarize, I would say I, I appreciate that the applicant has come back with additional information because we certainly didn't have enough to, to understand the proposal at the get-go, and as well as made some modifications to it. Which I, I appreciate. I think there's, it does make, I understand, I think it makes sense to be upgrading lighting fixtures. I know that's probably something we've all done in one of our homes for many of them. But I am concerned about the, sort of the lighting bleed going over the, the lot lines as well. So that's, that's sort of where I'm falling at the moment. How about, um, Bob, Ben?
So to me, it, it and with all respect to my earlier questioning, I think the point raised by the chair is an excellent one, which was, is there really a, if the lighting is better, the fixtures are better. It's, I'll, I'll ask it maybe or phrase it if this was what you were trying to approach. Is it possible to, is it possible for the applicant or its engineering to keep the lighting levels with regard to the abutters upon those, those lines in the same that exists now? And if, you know, that would, and and allow for the, the focused lighting basically on the front and maybe just at the ATM. I mean, that is, that seems to be, if I, unless I misunderstood the applicant, their big, their prior priority in this is to increase safety of the site in its off hours. Now, safety can be viewed in a lot of different ways, both public safety and personal safety, that being, you know, are you turning a corner into a darkened area that suddenly you go from bright to dark to bright? And there's another car there or something. I don't really believe that this, this bank has that kind of a business flow, regardless, I, but I don't, I don't monitor it. And I think it's different from the other suggested lots that we would, it was recommended to go look at. I know Jerry could speak to, as I can, to the one in Wakefield, which is just situated in a totally different property setup. So but I think, you know, on a larger, the point I made earlier, I, I will stand on, it's just going to look different. And for better or for worse, just because I, from my, my own common experience, when you put LEDs in, they just look different from the other lights. And you know, I, I don't know if that's a bad thing or a good thing, or it's just an inevitability. Maybe, you know, it'll be better. It, it will just serve a greater purpose. But I would be open to allowing for the existing levels along the abutters to be maintained. And the focused area that being the ATM, and even the front lot slightly, because it is the public way, but it doesn't seem substantial. Perhaps to be approached or attempted in order to resolve the issue.
All right. From, from what I'm hearing here, Austin and Amanda, it's, it's sounding like the, the board's inclination is, would not be to, to grant a variance in the, in the form requested. We have closed the public hearing. If you wished, I'll give you an option. We can go ahead and vote on this now, or we can procedurally, I think we can reopen this if you want to submit something else for us to consider a revised plan at a subsequent hearing. But I will, I will leave that to the applicant if that is your request.
Sure. You mind if, I know the public hearing is technically closed, but do you mind if I ask the question of the chair and the board?
Go ahead.
So I, my, my inclination, provided the board is comfortable with disagreements, would be to leave it open for one more meeting. Not that I want this to be like a seven month lighting discussion, but leave it open for one more meeting. Allow us to go back and see if we can refine that further. And, and if you don't mind, I'm going to ask a question in the form of a statement. I want you to just make sure you confirm what I thought I heard so that I'm doing the right thing. If we can try and refine the lighting levels to what we believe is most similar to lighting at the sidelines, to try and match those levels to the extent that we're able, or, or reduce it further, if, if such a thing is possible. And then see if there's a way to further tune the lighting in the front and maybe reel that in just a little bit. I think, you know, we were talking about security. I still want to maintain the lights in that rear parking lot because it is behind the building. And it kind of creates this dead spot that I think requires some level of illumination. But I can go back to the, the lighting designer who did this particular facility and see if I can achieve a reduced level at the sideline, if, at least to the existing levels. And see if I can get a little bit more focused on the front as well. And I can ask a couple of questions, two questions that I heard as part of our just general discussion where color, and I can maybe get some clarity on the color or see if there are options on the color. And if there's any way to implement some kind of motion detection device under the canopy, so it's not always lit up. I don't know the answer to either of those questions, but I can get clarity on that for the next meeting.
Awesome. That would be much appreciated. And so I will make a motion to reopen this so you can submit additional documents for next month's hearing. That was me jumping the gun on that. So all in favor of reopening so the petitioner can submit a revised plan for final discussion next month?
Barbara and I.
Vince, you're on mute. If you'd, I've got, I got a head nod, but I need a
Ben Ragucci, I, sorry.
Terrific. Thank you. And Jennifer Platt confirmed. So awesome. Thank you for your patience and your participation. We will look forward to seeing your updated plan. We will hopefully be able to wrap this up very quickly at the next meeting. And
One more procedural thing. Can you formally continue me to the next discussion?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I'm making a motion to formally continue until July 14th. All in favor?
Again, Barbara and I.
Ben Ragucci, I.
All right. Awesome. We will see you.
Thank you very, very much. Have a good night.
Thank you all.
Jeff, before we break with him, it sounds like planning his meeting this month. Is there any interest in trying to have them? Or should, are they, do they go through us first?
So we should put a request in Kathy to So we should put a request in Kathy to planning for them to provide any comments for us in advance of our meeting next month.
Okay, I believe they're meeting on the 21st. I'll, I'll get a packet to them and ask them to review it.
Great. And let them know that we were expecting a revised plan. If you would pop an email to the applicant since they, they've signed off mentioning the planning date. So if we can have their revised plan before the 21st, that might be a little tight for them, but if they can, that might be helpful for CPC.
Okay.
Alright, thank you. And everyone else for their patience. Let's move on. I think we are next on is Five Tower Hill Road.
Hey guys, can you hear me okay?
You can. Just give us one second. I want to read the hearing notice so we can get this into the officially openness. And I'm just scrolling through all of this. Oh, thank you Kathy for putting it up. I was still trying to get through, through all the filings. Alright, the public hearing will be held by teleconference virtual meeting on Thursday, June 9th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Petition of Pierre-Encre, Five Tower Hill Road, North Reading, MA MAP 54 parcel 13 for a special permit to raise chickens. Mr. Encre, hello and welcome. Thank you for your patience.
My pleasure. Can you hear me okay? Can you see me?
We can hear you and see you and tell us. I think we have a plan here too Kathy, if you would pop that up. Showing the location of your proposed chicken coop.
Yes, the location is about 60 feet from the road, about 40 feet from my house. It is enclosed on three sides by trees and brushes. And from the roadway to the proposed site, I actually have my vegetable garden. So it is not, not visible from anywhere except for my backyard. It's a space that is roughly 15 by 50. And I'm looking to have a small coop with 10 hens just to, you know, plant the yard, lay some eggs and feed my boys.
All sounds good to me. I appreciate that it's, what's the sideline setback from the closest abutter? You said 18 feet there. Okay, I see it. Approximately 20 feet off the sideline. That might, um, that is one thing they'll probably ask you if possible to inch that in, just a foot or two, so it's.
Yeah, absolutely. It's not a problem.
Terrific. Do we have any, any, any neighbors here Kathy?
I don't think so.
Alrighty, any questions or comments from our board?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that please?
I'm not sure that was someone here. There may have been background noise. Bob, did you have any questions or comments for the applicant?
No, it seems pretty straightforward. And I, I just out of curiosity, Mr. Have you had any conversations with your neighbors or is it just, is it because of where it's going to be situated, it isn't even going to be?
I've actually, my neighbors, it's not visible to any of my neighbors. And I've had two of my neighbors come up to me just the last couple of days saying, that's fantastic. Do I get fresh eggs?
That's, that always is helpful. That works. It doesn't end, and goes a long way. Alright, I would. Someone like to make a motion to close this? Bob, can I ask you to close this and make a?
Like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
A second.
Barbara and I.
All in favor?
Then Riguachi, I.
But I, Bob. Alright, and Bob, do you have Kathy's motions up in front of you?
I have the simple draft. So with regard to Five Tower Hill.
Yes.
Sorry.
No.
I, I moved for the grant of a special permit for the purpose of building a coop to house no more than four chickens. Said coop should not be located any closer than 20 feet to the front lot line or 10 feet to the side or rear lot line. And note should be made that roosters, there'll be no grant of variance. So roosters will not be allowed within the, the development.
Good, thank you.
And I wanted to make a amendment to that motion. I believe you would ask for up to 10 hens.
They come, they come in packs of 10, so I was hoping for 10 hens.
I like to. Up to 10?
Yes, noted.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
One second.
All in favor?
Barbara and I.
Then Riguachi, I.
I, alright, good luck with your chickens. I hope.
Thank you very much. Fresh eggs all around. Thank you.
Alright.
So the permit timeline, it should be constructed?
It'll be constructed in.
No, 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 sorry.
It's a special permit here, so Kathy will issue that. There's a 20 day appeal period for special permit.
Okay.
And then Kathy, remind me, I forget if we are sending those out or they can pick up their copy of the permit from Town Hall.
I send out a draft and then after the 20 day period, they can go into the town clerk and get certified copy.
Perfect. Alright, you're on your way.
Thank you very much, guys. Have a great evening.
Thanks, you as well.
Thank you.
Alright, I think we, that's, next is 21 Conker, is that right? Okay, virtual public hearing will be held on Thursday, June 9th, 2022 at 7:00 PM on petition of Loretta Martinez, 21 Conker Street, North Reading, MA MAP 18 parcel 16 for a home occupation special permit. Run her pet business per article 200 dash 42 of the North Reading zoning bylaws. Martinez, are you here?
There you are.
Thanks for hanging in there. Alright, tell us a little bit about your business, please.
Well, actually, I already had a permit when I lived at 63 Central Street at the 5 plus community. And unfortunately, three of my family members passed away, so I moved back to the family home on Conker Street. With my sister, it's a two family. And I have a small dehydrated pet treats. Dogs, bunnies, birds, horses. I use dehydrators. And I do retail, I do wholesale and online. I'm, I do believe somebody came by the house today in the driveway. In fact, I'm 150 feet driveway from the, on Conker Street. My next door neighbor is the Coopis who have the hut topping business. I'm across the street from Bobcat, Boston, and I'm next to Ferguson's. So I have this little house set back in the woods. And I just make them at my house. And I do not have heavy trucks coming in. I use, I go to FedEx or UPS and do my shipping that way. So it wouldn't impact the street any more than what we already have. And it's just something I started when I wanted to retire. I needed to do something. And there's no good animal treats out there.
Well, perfect. That sounds like you're doing just the things that we, we want for a home occupancy.
I'm also a member of the American Pet Products Association, which is a national organization that recognizes me as manufacturer. I'm in line with Blue Buffalo, Preurina. So I'm in that same organization with them. So they approve of my products because I wouldn't be able to get into that membership if they didn't. Never had a recall, knock on wood. And that's what I do. It's my spare time.
Well, that's fantastic. The, has, since you've gone through this before, I'm sure you're, you're aware of the standard conditions for a home occupancy special permit. No person employed other than the residential occupants, people in the home, no more than 300 square feet allowed for the use.
Right.
No display of goods or wares visible from the outside of your home, no signage on the outside of your home.
I don't want people to know that we're even here. We like our quiet, peaceful, safe driveway and being in the woods.
Perfect. That's just what we want. We don't want this to have any impact on your neighbors. It sounds like it wouldn't. So I would like to make a motion to grant a special permit. Oh, I'm kind of jumping the gun here. I forget to survey my board members. I'm so excited to get, to get, to get, to do this. Let me, let me retract that and ask my board members if they have any comments or questions. Ben, Bob?
No questions for me.
No questions, Madam Chair.
Alright. That being said, I'd like to move to grant a home occupancy special permit to the applicant Loretta Martinez for pet treat making business at 21 Concord Street per article 200 dash 42 of the North Reading zoning bylaws with, subject to the standard conditions, including no customers at the premises, although if you have a neighbor come by and you want to hand them a treat.
In fact, I use the post office box business so that I don't want people to know that there is.
You're there and operating. Perfect. I love that. That's even better. And the, and the special permits as all special permits for home ox are valid for four years. Alright, that's motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Barbara and I.
Then Riguachi, I.
Jennifer Platt, I. Alright, Ms. Martinez, you are approved again with a special permit. There's a 20 day appeal period. And after that, you can pick up a copy of your special permit from the town clerk.
And shoot me an email and let me know who has a dog or a bird or a rabbit. And I will make sure Kathy knows. I will drop them off at Town Hall.
Lovely. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. And good luck with your, with your ongoing business.
Thank you.
You're most welcome. Have a good evening. And last but not least, I believe, we have one more. For Elvira Road. There's a virtual public hearing will be held on June 9th, 2022 at 7:00 PM on the petition of Jonathan Muse for Elvira Road, North Reading, MA MAP 14 parcel 51 for a variance from the side and front setbacks. For in addition to expand the living room as well as the master bedroom on the second floor, according to the requirements outlined in the Dimension and Density Regulations and North Reading zoning bylaws. Alright, do we have a Mr. Muse here with us this evening?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Alright, last but not least, would you tell us what you are hoping to do?
Well, my wife now is fully remote, so we need to put an office space. And I have three little girls who are growing up fast and we're running out of space. So we need to make the house just a little bit bigger. So we're going to add a family room and a master bedroom above in the front of the house.
And, alright, so the black, black area on the plan in front of us is where the proposed addition would be. Is that correct?
Correct.
And it looks like you're, you're in between both Pine Ave and Elvira. Is it, so Elvira is the frontage you drive in that way?
Yes.
And what are, so setbacks here, 25 per buyer, 25 from the front and 20 from the sides. So the side, you're really, you're, you're just touching that. And then it's really the front yard where we're seeing the, where you need the variance. And can you just, looks like your septic's in the back?
Correct.
So is that why the addition needs to be on the front?
Yeah.
And Kathy, it looks like we have some elevations here. Would you scroll down to those for us? So the, is it that, the, the gable section, is that what we're looking at?
Yes, that'll be the, that'll be the, what's visible from Elvira Road.
Just bumping out the front, putting that gable.
Right, it'll essentially look the same. Just, you know, it'll be bumped out.
Alright, the it has, from looking at the plans, it's like no impact on the abutters in terms of the sides, very minimal.
No, on the side, we're all be asking for, we're asking for under four inches on the side. So.
That's, I don't see that being an issue. It's the frontage and yours coming into your front yard. Bob, then? Any concerns with that?
So the only question really is, is that given the location of the septic in the rear and in order to expand the property for the purposes stated, the hardship really was that he had to build out the front. There's no, there was no other option available to you, Mr. Muse?
No, that's, that's what makes the most sense. As far as what's existing to build onto the front end. And the, yes, the septic is in the back, so that's really not an option. And we don't have the room on either side.
Thank you.
Ben?
I have the same question as Bob, so that, that's, that's the only question I have.
Yeah, now that, from the layout of the lot and the location of the existing septic, looking at one of the plans, it has, might have been the first one Kathy, it shows the plot plan. Alright, so the, it shows approximate septic location in the back. And then there's also a box closer to the house. Is that the first, first tank for the septic? Looks like that's probably what that is. Can you see that?
Yes, that's the, yes, that's the tank.
Okay, gotcha. Alright, that, so that makes sense to me, given the, the property layout. And do we have any comments from neighbors or any, any, anyone else still with us?
This is Sophie Boyce and Nick Robertson. We are at 6 Elvira. John, we wish you all the best of luck.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thanks for, um, thanks for coming on this evening and sharing, sharing your support. That is always helpful. And I'm just looking, we have, there's someone here. Phil Healy, is that our, that's our recorder, right? Oh yeah, that's her. Right, that's all of us. Was there anything else on the file in this Kathy? I don't think so. Anything, any comments from anyone? Yeah, I don't see, I don't see anything from, anything in the file from other neighbors or CPC, so. And we do have your one neighbor in, butter in support. That's wonderful. If all is.
Jerry, any, any comments from engineer, from? Jerry, any, any comments from engineer from your office?
Oh, it all looks good to me. I don't have any issue with that. He'd only have to look at the, the septic design. He's adding a, he'd probably have to go to the health department and make sure that that's, that doesn't become an issue.
Good point. Thank you, Jerry. Make sure it's adequate for what will now be a four bedroom.
It'll still be a three bedroom. We're taking a bedroom away upstairs and we have just, we're not adding one, we're just changing the configuration. It'll still be three bedrooms.
Okay.
Oh, that works.
Right.
Right. And at that, Mr. Muse, thank you for submitting the plan drawings. A lot of times people come to us without this kind of preparation, so thank you for that.
Yes.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So you know, we send them away when they do that and make them come back, so. This helps us all be more efficient. I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
A second.
Thank you, Bob. All in favor?
Barbara and I.
Then Raguchi, I.
I, and Bob, can I ask you to make a motion on this?
Yes. I moved to allow pursuant to the petition of Jonathan Muse for Elvira Road, North Reading MAP fourteen parcel fifty-one for a variance from the side and front setbacks. In addition to expand the living room as well as a master bedroom on the second floor according to requirements outlined pursuant to town dimensional and density regulations, I moved to allow and grant what appears to be a twelve foot variance from the front lot line on the submitted plan per the setbacks. And nothing to exceed I, the stated variance need for the, for the side setback. Pursuant to again, dimensional density regulations of North Reading zoning bylaws.
A second.
And I would like to add to that, that's to be pursuant to the plan submitted, just add that to final decision. And can I have you resecond? Second that amendment?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Barbara and I.
Then Raguchi, I.
I, alright, congratulations. You are approved. You have again, a twenty day appeal period and then you'll be able to pick up your variance. You will want to record that, so it's in the public records. Once you alright, good luck with your project.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Good luck.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
Alright, everyone. Great work yet again.
So we're gonna move the minutes to the next, next meeting for approval.
Oh, let's, thanks for the reminder. I was, but let's see, you, I did read those. I have no problem with this baby. April minutes. And if you are, but Vinnie, you weren't here.
No.
Alright, yeah. So we will await with those until Murray is here. Yep, and same thing for last month, I wasn't here, so. And Murray is here, we will approve those. And that's all again.
Great.
Oh, I wanted to let you know that I found a way to put the materials that were going to be, or that were submitted for the hearings on our website. So I will mention that in the hearing notice at the bottom. If they want to view the materials, they can go on the website to look at them.
That's fantastic, Kathy. I think that's very helpful.
In case they can't make the meeting or in case they have questions.
Alright, I just want to get, review things ahead of time. That's fantastic. I appreciate that. And that's it. Alright, well. How is everyone? Good, good? Wrapping up the school year, Bob?
Yes, very much so. It comes quick, but then, then everything slows down, so that's how it kind of just seems to go.
Oh Kathy, did everybody receive the the comments that I have relative to the increases or?
Oh, did I send those out?
Increases?
I thought I sent them back a little while ago.
The fees, because we are, it's, it's very sparse where we're basically, at some point, not even covering our expenses.
You, Kathy did circulate those and do need our, how can we assist? Do you need approval from the board on that or? Just for our information?
Yeah, just basically for your information and, and so you want, you know, you're fully under. And I think there is a, if the board is, is on board with that, then all the better.
Absolutely, just pulling this up.
So what's the next stage, Jerry? They, does it have to go to town or does it go to just select them?
No, it doesn't go to select board. It doesn't go to town. It basically, there's, there's a law that was passed quite a few years ago. And I basically have the right to, to propose the increases. I just need to make sure that I let everybody know. And let them know thirty days in advance. And explain why. In this case, I don't think the, I don't, I don't think we've increased them. What is it Kathy? Fifteen or twenty years?
Probably, yeah.
Yeah.
My only question, Jerry, was, is, you know, and, and you commented on it to start that you're not sure whether you're even recouping the cost. Do, do we know that that's exactly what, you know, you, you should be taking what's actually the time that goes into each of these things?
Kathy could probably comment on that better than I. She's the one that basically is.
So the advertising for two weeks, and it may be because we have to put the virtual information on that makes it a little bit longer. The average advertising for the two weeks is going at one sixty-five, one seventy, and we only charge one fifty for the hearing. So we're going under a little bit each hearing.
And so as I'm looking at this memo you sent over, there's a base fee for, you know, special permit variance, appeals, home ox. And then on top of that, they'll pay for their advertising. Is that correct?
I think that's fair. Reason being is because Kathy's time is certainly not allotted in there. And we're basically paying out the time on a constant basis.
Now that, that makes sense. I mean, it's taking your time, Kathy's time. And how do these fees compare to some of our budding towns? Just out of curiosity.
I did, I did go through that. I do have a somewhat of a performer that I did put together. But I could have Kathy circulate that to each and every one of you, so you can basically review that.
Perfect. Now I'd be interested to see that. I'm just curious what our, what our neighbors are doing. But I think it makes perfect sense, Jerry, to be covering your costs. And, you know, updating these on a somewhat regular basis every few years rather than every fifteen or so. So no, I totally support, support that. It's, it's, we don't want this to be more of a burden on the, the town.
I mean, we, we did the same thing, Jerry, with, I'm, I'm chairman of the water board. We met last night and we do it annually for this reason. When, when I first started, I was blown away at how inexpensive it was to do just about anything. And, and now we're in line with just about everybody. But we look at it on an annual basis and make the changes, you know, in accordance with, and, and sometimes it's technology changes and things.
Yeah, we're, with what I proposed, pretty much in line with our neighborhood plus a lot of other communities outside of our neighboring towns as well. Um, we had this, we had the same issue with our building permit fees. But I was shocked that we hadn't, we hadn't raised them in almost twenty years. So we basically, we went through that process as well.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm sure it'll, you'll get some comments from folks at the counter who are used to seeing nominal fees, but we need to be fiscally prudent, so appreciate you putting the effort there.
We have, I think we have five hearings for the next meeting. All five might not go all the way through, but I will start charging in August, Jerry, or do we have to advertise prior?
We have to let people know with, no thirty days prior. So I, I would say probably for August.
Okay.
Great.
So does, does that mean there's gonna be a run on meetings to beat the?
Well, I do know, you know, the next few meetings are gonna be, a couple of them are gonna be very comprehensive.
Alright, yeah, the main street will be. We'll see what they get. See what they propose. It'll be interesting. Looking forward to hearing it. Alright guys, love seeing you, but I know everyone has
stuff.
Stuff to do, so do that. Go for it. Thank you very much for coming tonight. As always, appreciate your, appreciate your effort.
Move to close the meeting.
Second.
All in favor? I'm in.
Bob, Barbara and I.
I. Have a good night.
Take care, everybody. Thank you, Kathy.